For the zoning board of appeals, let's call the meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
John Uwin?
Here.
Louette Frost?
Here.
Tracy Bartlett?
Here.
Louette Frost is excused.
Okay. I take it there's no conflict of interest on any issue? Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Yes. Sorry.
Okay. Moved by John, supported by Tracy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, we'll start with the public comment. So come on up. Three minutes.
Good evening, Board. Judy Nemitz, East Bay Township. Chairman Gonzalez, would you like us to address item nine now or will you haul a public hearing because it doesn't really say that on the agenda?
Okay, thank you, but we will have a public hearing on number nine.
Okay, so you'd like us to speak to that at that time?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Step right up. Okay, we'll close the public comment at 6:31. Correspondence? Bill?
We've had a couple of letters that were in the packages. There was one that was handed out to the board members this evening and to the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Can we approve the approval of the minutes? Are there any additions, changes?
This is the one that was behind us.
Chairman Gonzalez?
Yes?
Louette Frost, her last name is spelled wrong in the minutes, so let me correct that.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll correct that. Do we have a motion?
Sorry. I was getting him his copy. I'll make a motion to approve the 3:11 regular meeting minutes.
With the correction?
With the correction of Luanne's last name.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Tracy, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Reports. Township.
Yeah, we haven't met again since our last meeting here, but we did, several of us went down to the MTA convention, annual convention, in Grand Rapids last week. It was really good, lots of good information and had a really good turnout. I think there was like 1,100, there was over 1,000 people attending, so that was really a good turnout, even though the weather was crappy. And then, I don't know if Claire's going to say anything or not, Claire went to the planning convention, annual convention, and received an award for East Bay's ordinance process, and maybe she can expound on that, but that was really cool. So she went out to that in Montana, right? Colorado?
Denver, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
It was an award for the township, for the zoning ordinance.
Right, but she accepted it.
I got to accept it.
She was like the driving force, so.
Well deserved.
Yep.
As far as the planning commission, we had our meeting on April 3, and we had a zoning boundary question that came up about a parcel of land that was situated both in the rural district as well as in the Forest Lakes area. And the rule was that the smaller piece takes on the larger piece aside, and that's what the planning commission agreed to staff, that that would be the zoning for that entire parcel. The other item was in the Holiday Forest Hill site buildings. They asked for an extension of another year, and that was also passed. And then there were a number of different zoning amendments suggested to the trustees to correct in the, in the award-winning zoning ordinance, that we had some corrections that we had to make. So that's what we did. And then there was some discussion on temporary dwellings, but no action taken. Planning and zoning?
I have a couple just quick updates. I wanted to let everyone know that the Beach District, the sub-area plan, is out for public review right now. It's going to be a sub-area plan of the master plan, so there's a 42-day public review period. The planning commission's going to be holding a public hearing to consider adoption on May 6th, so that plan is out on the website. It's at the township hall if you want to review and make any comments. And then, I know all the ZBA members did receive an invitation, but we're going to be cleaning up trash at the, on April 19th, if anyone's available and interested, from 10 to noon along the Tart Trail for the East Bay Township portion of the Tart Trail, so.
And the general public is invited.
Anyone is welcome, yep.
Everyone's welcome.
Come on down.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Bill?
Everything.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to item number nine, which is the business before the zoning board. Now, in the last meeting that we had, it was a postponement was made on the issue, so we don't really need to vote to bring it back up because it was postponed and requested to go on to tonight's agenda. But I will mention that when we postponed that particular item at that time, that was dealing with section 2.1 of the ordinance and a definition. Subsequent to that, the new, and you'll hear in a second from staff, that the, the new variance 2.25, which was amended, is now dealing with section 3.1 of the ordinance, which is a different issue. So therefore, when we have our discussion and anything that is subsequently decided, it might be different based upon the issues that were raised or the items that we have to pass. It might be different because, in fact, is now on a different section of the ordinance. So we just need to make that clear, that even though it is the same variance request, it's a different request actually based upon the ordinance that's existing. So with that case, Bill?
Thank you. We have a staff report that was prepared by Becca Rader-Sirre Obriva, and that's for ZBA case 225 at 4307, Balsam Circle. Impervious surface variance request. The applicant's William Mitchell and owner's is Erin House, and property's in the Lakes area. I'm going to go to the second page for the staff review. I just wanted to read a portion of the staff review before we get into the items. The applicant is requesting relief from section 3.1G, impervious lot coverage in the Lakes Area zoning district to allow the construction of a new dwelling and attached garage following discussions by the ZBA, but before decision, the applicant requested to postpone a decision on the application to allow for it. The applicant has submitted a revised application. The prior application was to determine that a stone driveway did not have to meet the definition of an impervious area. While this application is for a variance from the maximum impervious lot area coverage to allow the structures and other impervious areas, such as driveways and sidewalks, to exceed the maximum area of 20% and allow construction for up to 30% impervious lot areas, the site plan remains the same for this application as with the original application. Below are the approval criteria for the zoning board of appeals to grant a variance request. All conditions must be met in order to grant a variance. Staff has provided draft findings for each condition. The ZBA can approve, amend, or deny each of the draft findings as it sees fit. Section 7.3F, B, dimensional variances, the zoning board of appeals may authorize a variance from the strict application of the area or dimensional standards of this ordinance only when the applicant demonstrate all the following conditions apply. Thank you, Chairman Gonzalez. I'll let you go into the items if you wish.
Okay, thank you. Can we have the applicant?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us to come back. My name is Erin House. I'm here with my husband, Alan Talkenhop, we're the owners of 4307 Balsam Circle. We're also here with Will Mitchell, who's the engineer that's working with us, and Kevin Pavlik, the builder. So I want to thank you for the opportunity, for letting us to come back, and just to give you sort of a little history of why we're making this request and our relationship with this township. So I moved up here in 2004 to take a job with the Attorney General's Office prosecuting all of the domestic violence cases for Antrim, Grand Travers, and Leland County. And I've remained living up here, working for the Attorney General's Office, and prosecuting domestic violence and sexual assault cases since then. I lived in East Bay Township for 15 years before I got married in 2019, and since 2012, I've led a homeless outreach project in Traverse City where we provide meals twice a month out of Grace Episcopal Church to people in need who are struggling with homelessness, housing insecurity, and poverty. I got married in 2019 to my husband, and he was the prosecutor up in Charlevois, so we moved, I moved to Charlevois County to be able to live with him. And when he retired from being the prosecutor, we had the opportunity to move back to Traverse City. And we wanted to come back here, I wanted to come back to East Bay Township, and we wanted the opportunity to be able to live on the water. I feel like there's so many people, we have such a beautiful area that we live in, and yet so many of the people that own property on the water here are not full-time residents, are not people that are contributing in the same way to our community as those of us that live up here full-time. So when we were looking, we found this home on Balsam Circle, fell in love with that property, the fact that it's in, you know, it's on this small circle in a, in a very small community. But it's a unique lot, as you guys, I think many of you have been to the lot where our house is. It's 11,000 square feet. It's very steep on both sides, so it slopes down to the lake and it slopes down to the road. And so there's really only one spot on there to build a house. So I had a friend that was a builder, and we had him come and look at the lot before we bought it and talked about what would be the options. My husband has four grown kids. We want to have room for them to be able to come to stay with us and to bring their children there. My husband's mother also lives in town. She's been widowed for more than 20 years and likely may need to come to live with us at some point in the future. Right now, the house that we have is 800 square feet. It has one bedroom, a small office, a bathroom, and then a kitchen, living room area. So when we looked at this initially with a friend of mine, the thought was that we could just build a second story onto the house and add a garage. And we believed that that was possible when we bought the house. And then since then, we've had a number of structural engineers come and look, and it turns out that the current foundation is not sufficient to support a second story. It is too thin and narrow, and it is not deep enough, and you can't build onto it. So then we looked into and consulted with builders and talked with Kevin Pavlik about, was there a way that we could maybe raise the house up and dig a basement underneath and use that as additional living space? And then we learned that that really isn't a feasible option, both because of the topography of this land, to even get equipment around to try to do that, and then also whether the structure of this building that is many, many years old, doesn't have, there's issues with, with the house and the age of the house, so that that wasn't also a feasible option. So I just want to be clear that we didn't buy this house ever with the intent that we were going to tear it down and build something else, and maybe we were naive about what our options were. But so what we're proposing to do now is to build a house that would be, you guys have the plans, I think, for it. The house itself would be 1,380 square feet with an attached garage that's 576 square feet. All of this is within the setbacks of the neighbors, the setbacks from the lake, the setbacks from the well and the septic. So we aren't looking to build a huge house, we're looking to build a house that would be a story and a half and have a full basement to allow us to be able to have family come and visit to potentially, if my mother-in-law needs to live with us, to be able to do that. I work from home much of the time so that I could then have a home office. And then to have a garage, because living in northern Michigan without a garage is it's possible, we've done it for two years, but it's a difficult thing. I think it's important to recognize that our, the current coverage of our lot, much of it has to do with the length of the driveway that's necessary because of how steep the property is to be able to get to where you can build the house. And we have looked to see, could we build the garage somewhere different? Could we shorten the length of the driveway? And if you remember, when we were here last month, our proposal was to build a house and a garage that would be under the 20%, and then to construct a driveway, an engineered pervious driveway that would allow for drainage, but we were told that that was probably not going to be acceptable and that there was a concern, I think, that was raised specifically about how steep the driveway is and whether there'd be runoff of gravel and dirt that would go into the road and to cause other problems. So the current coverage is 24%. So the current coverage is already beyond what is supposed to be allowable. And there's no particular plan for water runoff right now. I mean, there's a gutter that runs across the front of our house, but other than that, I don't think that anything has been done to really manage water where it's going, whether it's going into the lake or what's happening with it. So I think what we're proposing is to cover up to 30% of the lot, which is really just 6% more than what we already have. And so we're an 11,000-square-foot lot, so 6% is, we're looking to cover 660 square feet more than what we cover right now. You know, I think my understanding is that currently lots are supposed to be 40,000 square feet, and so 6% of 40,000 is 2,400. That's bigger than what we're even proposing to completely cover with what we have. Adding our house, potential house, potential garage and driveway would be less than, than 6% of an 40,000-square-foot lot if we had one. So, you know, we have looked to try to figure out if there was something else that we could do. We're not trying to build a huge house. I don't think that we're asking to do anything that's unreasonable. It's not possible to add a second story. It's not possible to just lift up the current house and dig a basement. It's not possible to move the driveway closer. I guess it's not possible to use a different driveway surface, which we believe would be pervious. As you, I believe, got a letter today from the McCobries, who are our neighbors directly next door to us. I've sent them our variance request, I've sent them the plans, I've sent them long explanations, and they know what we've been going through, and they know that they are in support and don't have any objection to this. I am aware that there were two letters that were submitted today. I think it's noteworthy that they're essentially the same letter. So it looks like there was a letter that was drafted by the Watershed Center and then essentially copied and submitted again by someone named Barbara Winkler. And I respect their concern for the water. I respect the fact that there is a zoning ordinance and that we are asking for a variance, but I believe that we meet the criteria for that variance. I also note that there seem to be three things within their letters that they were particularly concerned about. So it appears to me that their concerns, and I'm quoting directly from their letters, were that impervious surfaces prevent water from soaking or infiltrating into the ground, that impervious surfaces often result in water collecting on the nearest low section of land and may cause or exacerbate flooding, and also that increasing the amount of impervious surfaces can lead to removal of vegetation such as trees, shrubs, and grasses that may treat stormwater or reduce flooding and provide shade, screen, and habitat. Both of the letters also seem to re, to suggest that we should locate the driveway and the garage somewhere different, and they may have not have had the opportunity, like you all had, to come to the property and just to see that that really isn't a feasible option here. So my concern is that I think that they're just asking, it's a very generic objection that they're making. They want you to stick just directly to, you know, what the zoning restriction says. There are reasons for allowing people like us to ask for a variance under reasonable conditions. And I think that the three specific things that they express concern about do not apply directly here in terms of leading to an actual problem. So they talk about the impervious surfaces preventing water from soaking or infiltrating into the ground. You know, that's a fact. But what we're asking to do is simply cover 6% more of our lot. So we're talking about 660 feet where there would be less soaking in or infiltrating of water into the ground. So when you think about the concept of a more impervious surface, it sounds like a huge problem. When you think about, we're just talking about 660 square feet, you know, that, that's very different, right? And as I said before, if you had six additional percent on a 40,000-square-foot lot, then you'd be talking about 2,400 square feet, and that is a lot of area where water isn't soaking into the ground. As you have seen too, on the plans that we've submitted, there is a whole plan for how to manage the water, how to make sure that there's 0% runoff going into Spider Lake, and also to manage sort of how this water is going to safely get into the ground and not flood the road and not put things into the lake that shouldn't be there. Their second concern is about the impervious surface with water collecting in the nearest low section of land, which may cause or exacerbate flooding. So I'm not quite sure where they're concerned about the flooding occurring. So there isn't going to be any water runoff into the lake. If water did run into the lake, I think that if it was clean water, it'd probably, probably be a helpful thing to have more water go into the lake. As you all have seen that have been to our property, it's called Balsam Circle because in the middle of the circle is like a wetland area that's unbuildable. That would be a good place for water to runoff into. So I don't see, and all of the houses along, right along by our house are sort of up on a hill like that. So there isn't a concern that by us adding 660 square feet, that we're going to be flooding our own property or a neighbor's property or the road in that situation. And then there's also, their third concern was about having a greater impervious surface leading to removal of vegetation and trees and habitat. If you've visited our lot, it unfortunately doesn't really have any, it has a few trees, but it doesn't have any shrubbery. It has almost no grass and has very little habitat on it. We actually, we haven't done anything with landscaping or adding shrubbery because of, after we bought the house, trying to figure out what we were going to do with construction and knowing that that would all get torn up. But, you know, our plan after a new home of whatever size is built is that we are going to be planting grass and putting in shrubbery, and I think the habitat will actually probably be nicer than it is right now in that situation. So I respect the concerns that they've raised. I see them as sort of standard generic concerns, and I think that what's before the board is our specific variance request and whether there are unique situations because of our lot and because of the circumstances that justify the variance, and also that I think the three specific concerns that they raise, I don't really think apply here under the specifics of what our lot is and what we're requesting to do and the minimal nature of what we're trying to change.
Thank you.
Any questions or anything?
Yep. Any questions of the board?
This time, anyway.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, we'll have a public hearing and open it up at 6:53.
My name is Todd Millar, and I'm an attorney with Parker Harvey Law Firm here in Traverse City. Our firm represents members of Protect Forest Lakes, an LLC organized by members who live in the Forest Lakes area overlay, and also other interested members who want to protect the unique lakes that are contained within East Bay Township. I'm here tonight to ask you to deny the variance request. My firm did submit a letter to ZBA, which I believe was included in your packet. I'm just going to touch on very briefly some of the arguments that were put forth in that letter and also a couple other observations. First and foremost, this is a very small parcel meant for a very small home. It is 11,350 square feet according to the application, whereas, as was mentioned earlier, the minimum square footage is 40,000 square feet. So less than a third of the required size for these types of lots. Secondly, the plat, which should have been attached to our letter but wasn't, and so I provided copies of that with you tonight, doesn't quite jive with the survey that was created and submitted by the applicant. The plat suggests that the square footage of this parcel is a fair amount less than 11,350 square feet, which, when you do the math then, means that the percentage of coverage by impervious surface goes up. And so it could be more than 30% that they're asking for. Could be 32 or 33% instead of the 30, and the coverage right now greater than the 24% that they're arguing. Next, the zoning ordinance prohibits the expansion of a nonconformity that intensifies that nonconformity, and that is in section 7.2I. And in this case, that's exactly what they're doing. They're increasing the nonconformity. The nonconformity is the impervious surface above 20%. They want to take it, their numbers, from 24 to 30%. So they have changed the request to a variance, so I won't talk about the definition of impervious surface. If you analyze this under the standards that are contained in your ordinance, and I think Sarah does a good job walking through the standards for granting a variance request, there are a couple that I want to focus on, and these are in section 7.3F, subparts B, which talks about practical difficulty, the applicant's problem in not being self-created in subsection C, and then finally subsection F, which talks about the conditions or situations which necessitate the requested variance is not so general or of such recurrent nature as to make a formulation of a general regulation for such conditions reasonably practicable. This is self-created. They want to build a bigger house than the zoning ordinance permits them. Sarah indicates in her report that there is a valid building envelope here and the ability to create a house and a driveway and comply with the impervious surface requirements. Secondly, and more importantly, if you grant this variant, the exception is going to swallow the rule because of the number of small lots that exist in the Forest Lakes overlay area. You're going to have a significant number of people potentially coming to you asking for the same thing. We took a look at the number of houses around Spider Lake. There are 422 residential parcels. 81% of those are less than an acre. 55% of them are less than half an acre. And so you start granting these types of variances, how are you going to stop even if it's only for 600 square feet? 600 square feet, if everybody adds 600 square feet to their lot of impervious surface, what's that going to do to the impervious surface around Spider Lake? Finally, I took a look at your master plan today, and what's clear to me from reviewing the master plan is that the purpose of the Forest Lakes overlay district and what the township hopes to do with that in the future about increasing protections for the natural resources in that area seems to be contrary to what they're asking you to do here tonight, and that is allow an increase in impervious surface. So for those reasons alone, we would ask that you deny the variance request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just ask, if you're going to consider a letter that Mr. Millar, could we have the courtesy of having the capital?
So if you didn't get the letter, I apologize. I believe that letter may have been sent to Mr. Mitchell. I believe that letter may have been sent to Mr. Mitchell.
It was the emailed one.
Yes, it was emailed.
I didn't, I don't see the attached, the only attached letter I can see is from the watershed.
I didn't see a letter.
Bill, that's the watershed letter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's in the packet. I can give it to you.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Is it from?
It's from Mr. Parkes.
Okay, easy, easy.
I would have seen Parker Harvey letter.
Hang on a second, Judy.
Yes, I do.
Okay, please.
Judy Nem, it's East Bay Township. Thank you tonight, commissioners and our board. A printed work which is not read and adhered to becomes a product without process. In other words, if we don't adhere to our ordinance and enforce it, it is not worth the paper it's printed on. This is a nonconforming. We worked a long time on that type of ordinance. We have an A and we have a B. A B addresses the area of the lakes area. It addresses environmentally sensitive area. That is our drinking water. That is our watershed that goes to the bay. This is a nonconforming. You cannot enlarge a nonconforming lot. There seems to be a discrepancy between the county records as a square footage and the survey. On the survey, you'll notice that the ordinary high watermark was done by Mansfield. It's my understanding that there is a consistent ordinary high watermark developed by the engineer of our township, Wade Trim. Where is that? That's the one for Spider Lake in the lakes area that needs to be used. The ordinary high watermark developed by the township. We did that because we kept getting surveys that were inconsistent. So our planner came up with Wade Trim, and they're consistent to be used and applied to that lake. Is that where the discrepancy on the square footage comes? Because Wade Trim is, it's my understanding, is the official ordinary high watermark, with all due respect to Mr. Mansfield. In addition, if you've been out to the area, there is a designated wetland across the street. The driveway has a 23.3% slope. We do have something in our ordinance, if you've read it, about slopes. If the water hits that, it is going to come down there like a waterfall and hit that wetland. That wetland leaches into the watershed, which is Spider Lake, which is Runny Lake, which is our Beavis Lake, which is the Boardman, which is the bay. I'm asking you tonight to deny this and uphold your award-winning ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Craig Kalesma from Spider Lake. Just to reiterate some comments that are already made, and I understand these are difficult things that you're deciding for what your view is, your property that you want to live and spend your time and family, you know, or time with, but these areas are very small allotted. The elevations on this parcel are white marked, as already commented. You know, the 23% slope on the driveway area does drain into the wetlands. The front of the parcel has a slope that's about 15 feet over 50 feet, which is 30% slope. The distance between the houses in the area and the adjacent very extensive blacktop driveway is minimal, at most 20 feet. So any of the runoff that's going to occur for these areas of impervious surfaces will have a difficult time without percolating down into Spider or into the wetlands. The inconsistency in terms of the prior survey is difficult to make out from the provided diagrams, but the county website, the parcel viewer says it's a .22 acre parcel, which is about 9,600 square feet versus 11,380 square feet on, or approximately, on the current survey. And as far as I'm aware, we're not then, you know, creating new land, and we don't have that ability. So there is this discrepancy. If we apply the impervious proposal to the prior square footage of the parcel, you're talking about a 35% impervious surface. So many of the lots there are not conforming in this whole section of the lake, Balsam Circle, Lakeview Trail, and in that whole area, any increased runoff is going to have detrimental effects to the ecology, the microecology of the bay that your parcel sits on, as well as the adjacent lake. I'm not sure what's the right question to answer to this question, but certainly I think we need to be cautious in terms of liberalizing, you know, the well-thought-out impervious surfaces and ordinances that are trying to protect the environment. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
5878. Gabriel Bogart, my wife Mary Alice Bogart. We're new residents at 5878 Runny View Road. We've owned the property for two years. I, Mr. Gonzalez, watched the previous meeting and really appreciate the fact that you said there may need to be a sliding scale on some of these lots. I'd also like to state that I was the president of the ZBA in Kingsley for several years, so I certainly do appreciate the position you're in because I've been there. That being said, the ZBA would not, there would be no ZBA if there wasn't a reason for a ZBA. You're here to grant variances, deviations from your written, well-written ordinances. That being said, a garage is a hardship, not having a garage is a hardship in Michigan. I think we could all agree to that after a lot of the winters we've been through. So I would hope you guys consider your responsibility as a board to grant and allow variations because if you're not here to do that, there's no reason for a ZBA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Carol Piesel, Township resident. The general idea I'd like you to consider, not only in this case today, but in any case that involves a waterfront property, consider that waterfront property has extra considerations versus ones that are landlocked properties. That is, is that the water, in this case, the lake, is owned by all. We have our bottom lands as the property owners, and then just the water in the lake is owned by all the citizens of Michigan. The lake, the water, is the shared backyard of all of the people around the lake. So when somebody does something on one property that could impact the water, then it's not just impacting their property. It's potentially impacting everybody around that body of water and any bodies of water connected to the one where the property is being changed. So when you talk about the percentages of pervious versus impervious surfaces, those were carefully adopted in our environmental ordinances because we know that it's so important that the natural runoff of precipitation, whether it be snow or rain, go through the natural processes of going through the ground, being filtered, the nutrients taking out, and then going into the lake or into the surface water of the lake or into the groundwater. And that groundwater is the water we all use. We all have wells. That's what we use to drink. That's what we use to wash with. So it's just a simple idea, but it's a complex idea, and it impacts at least one of those items in the criteria that you're considering. Will changes on one lot just impact that one lot, or can it theoretically impact all of the people around the lake? Please consider that principle. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
You've got the floor.
We don't, it's the second chance. My name's Alan Tovinoff, 4307, Balsam Circle. I'm Aaron's husband. Nice to see you again. As she said, I lived in Charlotte for 30 years. I was on the planning commission. I was on the school board. I was, ran for prosecutor. I held a lot of different positions. And I always say I'm more comfortable being on your side of this than my own here, standing here. But I just want to say a couple of things because one of, the main point I want to talk about is it reminds me of a situation that we had in Charlotte that I dealt with for years. But I want to respond to a couple of specific things that were said, specifically one of the things that Mr. Millar said, and that was in one of the letters, and he had statistics about how many lots our size are in the township, and that's kind of whether you're on a zoning board of appeals or planning commission or school board or as a prosecutor, it's a good scare tactic, that the sky's falling. You know, if you grant this, then oh my God, here they come. First of all, I don't think that's the proper basis. You know, it's just like when I was prosecuting people. We don't decide what happens on your case because of what might happen with the next 10 cases. We're going to treat you fairly, and that's our obligation as public servants. I think more germane though is the topography. You know, I dare say, when you drive around my neighborhood, it's an odd topography that we have, and you do have a lot of small lots. And even in my neighborhood, as you head around the circle, we've got some small lots that are flat lots, that are close to the lake, and they've got a house there with a driveway and a garage, and, you know, and that's their situation. I doubt very highly, and I don't remember the percentages that Todd quoted to you, but, you know, 55% of the lots are small lots. It's not just the fact that we have a small lot, it's the topography of the lot that's the problem. If we could have a shorter driveway and put our house closer to the road, absolutely that's what we'd do and be a no-brainer. If there's something that we could do to, we tried to make it, so I understand your definition of impervious might be different than the dictionary one or my definition. We tried to make it more pervious with a different driveway. We were told that is not helpful. Some of the arguments that are being made, I don't disagree with what they're saying. If there's a way to prevent runoff, that's, we should all try to prevent runoff. And what Erin was saying is with the landscaping that we're going to be adding, if you go and look at that now, there's virtually no landscaping. So as the last lady said, we would expect that certain, that the grass surface is going to slow down runoff. It's not slowing down runoff right now with what we have. There's talk about our driveway. Well, we're not, definitely not making our driveway bigger. We might actually be making it smaller. I don't know. But it's, you know, what that slope is and what that surface is, is not going to change if you vote no here. So that is going to continue to be an issue. You know, what this reminds me of a little bit, I was on a Charlotte school board for 10 years, was president. We built a new high school there, and we thought we were doing a great thing for the community. We worked for years and years and years getting the high school built, and voters passed it, we built it, and we got sued the next day. Well, no, I'm sorry. First, they came with petitions. They came with arguments at meetings. They packed board meetings with 200 people. When that didn't get them what they want, they brought petitions, then they sued us. And at the end of the day, you could strip away all the arguments, but it was, I just don't want this in my backyard. And what we ended up with, because runoff was an issue in that situation, right? And so if what you want is a situation where you've got something engineered to prevent runoff and deal with runoff, that that's truly the issue that folks have, and I did that. That's what we're offering. That's the whole point of what's going on here. But I would say to you, and no disrespect to the folks here, that's not the issue. That's not the issue. The issue is, don't build a new house in this neighborhood where I don't live. I don't live in your neighborhood. My neighbors are fine with it. They think it's a great idea what we're going to do, it's a nice modest home. But if runoff is the issue, then we're happy to work with the township. We're working with these guys to try to figure out how to minimize that runoff. And we offer, then offer. We said we would do a different style of driveway that we thought would be helpful with that. We can do landscaping in the front yard that will help deal with that. That's an issue that everybody can get behind and try to address, but this idea of just because it says here, no, I get that, and that's what you're really being asked to do. But if the issue is runoff, then I would say, you know, there's ways that you can deal with that, and you've got smart people working with you here, but I know as a school board, we did that. You know, it's like, well, we've got retention ponds, we've got foliage, we've got different things that we can do to address this issue. You don't have that now. So at the end of the day, what you really are going to end up with, if you approve this, is a better situation than what you have now, plain and simple. So I guess that you consider.
Thank you. Normally, when we have public hearings, if you go, you're not allowed to come up and talk about the same thing twice. So if you have a different point, by all means.
It is rather, it's more of a question, I guess. A question that every one of us could be faced with in this room, and if you're living on a small lot and your house burns down, your lot essentially has become, has been deemed unbuildable. With, if you're going to, what I'm saying is, I've got an 1,100 square foot house. My pervious area on my particular lot, and I love the lakes, I grew up here, but if an act of God were to burn my little house down, I'd be unbuildable with the current ordinance. And I think we're all faced with that. A lot of people could be faced, so you, and my, you just got to be careful. You got to be real careful.
Thank you.
I've just got a couple of quick things to say. As far as like calculating area, we do have experts for that, and, you know, when we present something, we're licensed, and it's a real number. It's not made up. And as far as the ordinary high watermark concerned, when the slopes are steeper, any variance in the height is minimized. And just like everybody said, on this lot, it's steep going down to the lake. So even if you raise the corner however, by a tiny, tiny minute, it's this far on the ground. It's not a big amount. And then, just as a, I live in East Bay Township, I, 976 Tranquil Point Road. I live on the lake, and just as a resident of the township, I support people being able to, you know, apply for variances and grant relief in situations like this. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at 7:18, and we'll take it back to the board.
Chairman Gonzalez, could I make just one quick clarification?
By all means.
Thank you. I did want to just kind of echo what had been noted by Mr. Mitchell and just provide clarification for the board. So the county GIS data, that hasn't been surveyed, so it's a useful resource, useful tool, but that's not what we rely on for a survey, for the parcel size for determining impervious surface. So as was mentioned, we did have Wade, the township did have Wade Trim go through and determine ordinary high watermark elevation for each one of the lakes. That's been very helpful, as many of our applicants don't have a licensed surveyor that's going out and determining ordinary high watermark. However, when we have a survey that's provided to us by a licensed surveyor that delineates the water line as the ordinary high watermark, then we do, then we respect that. The issue that we have gotten in The issue that we have gotten into in the past is that oftentimes, we have a survey and it shows the water's edge. The water's edge is very different than the ordinary high-water mark. So when we have a licensed surveyor that delineates the ordinary high-water mark, then we do honor that. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you, Claire. Yeah, we'll accept, we'll accept the survey. Questions? Comments?
Are we going to go through the?
We will. But I do want to repeat that, that originally, when we went through the issues and the comments and the items, that was based upon a different request. And this one now is, which was 2.2 in the ordinance, this one is now 3.1G. So you may have, it's going to be the same questions, have to be the same rules, but the answers could be different.
Chairman Gonzalez, your intention is to walk through each one of the criteria individually?
Yes. As soon as, as soon as we're satisfied, we have no other comments, questions of anybody.
A lot of concerns, but it probably doesn't have to do with the variance, so.
No. Share your concerns.
Well, the concern is that, I guess I'm hearing all the water runoff problems. And is there a problem with the type of water or the pollutants in the water? I mean, if it's rainwater running through, down the edge of a, to the lake, down the edge of a little to the lake, or going out the front to a wetland, eventually it all goes into the ground, and you have the water table or the water level. So is there something with the water that we don't want runoff for a particular reason that's considered a pollutant? And I'd like to, if somebody could just share that a little bit with me, I greatly appreciate that.
I can, I mean, I can address the plan in front of the board. The plan in front of the board retains, in a certain situation, so the idea that if you have an asphalt roof, you might have some, you know, I don't know, contaminants or whatever word you want to use, you might get some sort of petroleum products in the water. And some people don't like petroleum in the water, you know, in the lake. But if it goes into a storm pond, a retention pond, or in a crock, and is filtered through the ground, the ground would generally filter that out. So in a situation where you're creating retention, where it's infiltrating through the ground, then you reduce any contaminants that might directly go into the lake. Contaminants are just, as a general rule, those would be petroleum products.
John, I would also refer you to, in our zoning ordinance, we have in our environmentally sensitive areas, we have a statement of intent that kind of goes into some detail just about the idea behind a vegetative buffer, the reasoning behind having impervious surface limited to the 20%. Those types of things related to water quality, to slowing runoff, to, you know, cooling, cooling the water to prevent kind of the heating of the water. So it's kind of all related to ecosystem services.
That I understand. I was just curious what the concerns with that. Because nothing really changes with this. I mean, okay. And I guess getting out of the retention, and this goes probably back to the planning commission, but that's not for our discussion probably, is that if we could develop some kind of retention plan for going down the road with this, that might be an option to look at, if you follow what I'm saying here.
I'm not totally clear.
Well, it's like the gentleman said, if you've got additional runoff at these small lots, if you can create a retention or retention pond that lets that go back into the ground slowly, that keeps it on the property, it really doesn't change the runoff from where it would be. You know, the jobs I have, we did a lot of retention pond and detention pond with different surfaces. To me, that might be an option, I guess, is all I'm saying.
Well, I can only say that every time we have an issue coming up before the planning committee, Claire, you can correct me on this. One of the discussions usually revolves around that, and there's usually some engineering study done, or there is some concern as to the effect of any type of water runoff, or any type of pooling, or anything of any particular type of a project that somebody has. One of the ingredients in the overall consideration and the plan itself is how do you handle the water runoff? So that is usually brought into each case, and usually looked at pretty much sometimes in depth as to how the water runoff is affected by rain, snow, you know, high-water marks, flow from Mitchell Creek, et cetera. But it's always a good idea, because it always can improve.
I guess, Chairman Gonzalez, that brings up one, something that I sit here and look at the site plan. It mentions proposed crocs and so on, of taking this roof water for roof runoff. I'm just curious, it only says proposed, it doesn't say it's going to actually be there.
Everything is proposed.
Come up to the lecture, please.
Everything is proposed. It's a proposed house, proposed croc. Everything is proposed until we actually build it. If you approve that, we'll put that in.
That's where I'm kind of struggling with this. I mean, I would assume that a lot of this water we're talking about from an impervious surface, saying the roof, is going to end up in something, not just running down the slope.
And I presume, or clarify, that the word proposed as used is a state of art.
I'm unfamiliar with what you're saying, but proposed just means we're proposing this, we haven't built it yet.
No, I understand. Using as a state of art, as is proposed.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's just the terminology, state of art.
Yes.
And just to be clear, we, when we, whenever we know what we can build, then we'll get final plans, and we will absolutely put in the crocs and whatever we need to do for water runoff. It's just right now, we don't know what we can build, so we don't have, you know, super detailed plans. But yes, we're not going to back off from that. We will absolutely do whatever we need to do to properly contain the water.
Thank you.
Can I add something to this?
I'm sorry, but the public comments.
I was just about the retention of the water. Can I answer a few questions?
Okay.
So when we're proposing.
And you identify?
My name is Kevin Pavlik, I own Isaac Brothers. I've been hired by the clients to build.
Okay, just needs for the record.
So when we're proposing a water management plan, what we're proposing is to collect all of the runoff water from the roof through the gutter system, into downspouts, into drain plates, which go into crocks in every downspout. And not only that, but we also, when we design this driveway, if we are approved, the driveway is going to be sloped in such a way, will has created on the site plan, a retention pond that gets, that's built before the road. So the driveway is going to run down, the water is going to run into that retention pond, so it doesn't cross the road and go into the wetlands. Okay? So that's what we're proposing to do, to be approved, is we want to manage 100% of the water that's coming out this property. So that's where I'm confused, where everybody says, oh, this water runoff, watershed into the lake. None of it's making it to the lake like it is now. It's all going to be managed. I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear.
Thank you. Are there other thoughts? Comments?
I have just one other, just kind of comment. So I would say, related to stormwater runoff, we've got, you know, we kind of handle it differently, whether it's residential or commercial. So as Paul indicated, a commercial property, we require a stormwater permit, we require all of the calculations, they have to accommodate 100-year back-to-back storm event with infiltration, they've got the stormwater basins. Separately, with the residential property, really the mechanism that we have in the zoning ordinance is our impervious surface. And that's kind of how we, how we address stormwater and runoff, and ensuring that we're preserving the water quality and other types of goals as stated in the ordinance. So there's certainly opportunity to look at the ordinance in the future. This would be a separate policy discussion from what we're discussing here. But I think having the planning commission take a look at permeable paver systems would be something very, very reasonable, to have the planning commission take a look at it, to have, to allow that for a little bit more flexibility for an applicant that has a smaller parcel, to really make sure, you know, they're not just putting gravel on their parcel, they're putting in a system where it's a couple feet of like the double-A gravel on top of it, you've got the permeable pavers, you're ensuring that there's a maintenance. And so while that's not part of our ordinance right now, that would be another mechanism and another tool that we would have in place, where we could ensure that we're preserving water quality while still allowing for a little bit of flexibility with residential development. So I just wanted to mention that. It's not necessarily a policy discussion tonight, but it's something, I think the planning commission is always interested in hearing from the ZBA about issues that arise, and you can always make a referral up to the planning commission to take a look at that policy.
Yeah, I don't want to get off the beam here, because the water runoff is an important issue, but we're here to talk about the ordinance and what the ordinance says. And also, in fact, in the discussion and the calculation of impervious, you know, we have a definition on what goes into that calculation. So at that point, until that's either changed or modified in some way by the planning commission up through the trustees of the board, we have to deal with what we currently have in front of us. So, not to be a hard one on this one, but that's where we are. So is there any other questions, comments, thoughts? If not, then I think we should go through the standards as specified in section 7.3F. And that would start with A, which is, a practical difficulty exists on the subject site, such as exceptional narrowness, shallness, shape or area, presence of a floodplain, exceptional topographic conditions that need to comply with the federal or state law, and strict compliance with the zoning ordinance standards would unreasonably prevent the owner from using, from using of the subject site for permitted use, or would render conformity unnecessary burdensome, excuse me. Demonstration of a practical difficulty shall have a bearing on the subject site or use of the subject site, and not to the applicant personally. Economic hardship or optimum profit potential are not considerations for practical difficulty. So. Is it satisfied or not satisfied?
I mean, like has been stated from several people, there are several lots in the area that are under the same kind of constraints or conditions. So I, I mean, I would say it's not satisfied.
John?
I think it's satisfied.
I'm sorry.
I think it's satisfied.
It is satisfied. Rod?
I think it's satisfied.
I would say that it's satisfied on this one. Okay. Demonstrated practical difficulty results from exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the subject site at the time the ordinance was adopted or amended, which was different than the typical properties in the same zoning district or the vicinity.
I think that's satisfied.
I agree. I think it's satisfied, and the key word in there is topography.
Tracy?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Before I answer that? We didn't change anything with the impervious surface with the new ordinance, correct?
That's correct. It's always, yeah, been 20% before now.
Okay. I mean, according to, if you say the first one is satisfied, then this one kind of has to be satisfied, so.
Okay, so that one's satisfied. I agree. Okay, see, the applicant's problem is not self-created.
See, can I, sorry. This one is a hard one for me, because they can build a house, they just have to build it smaller. So, I mean, there's a house there now, and I know it's not the house they want, and that's unfortunate. However, I think it's not satisfied.
I agree with that. It's not satisfied.
Rod?
I agree. It's not satisfied.
And making amends, that is, it's not satisfied.
Chairman Gonzalez, you agree with that?
I do. As you said, unanimous.
I'm sorry.
Okay, you unanimous.
Thank you.
The variance would provide substantial justice by preserving substantial property rights similar to those enjoyed by the majority of other properties in the vicinity and the other properties in the same zoning district. The decision shall not bestow upon the property special development rights not enjoyed by other properties in the same district, or which might result in substantial adverse impacts on properties in the vicinity, such as the supply of light, air, significant increases in traffic, increased odors, an increase in the danger of fire, or other activities which may endanger the public safety, comfort, morals, or welfare.
I think that's satisfied.
I think it's satisfied.
So what makes it satisfied, can I ask?
I don't think what they're doing is going to really affect anybody.
Okay.
It talks a lot about light, air, significant increase in traffic, all that type of thing, increased, I mean, I'm not sure that the building of that house is going to make that change.
No, I agree. It's not going to be a.
Well, I, okay, my thing is, I don't think it's satisfied.
Yeah, I don't either.
But just to be clear, I want to know, John and Rod, you're both think it's satisfied? Tracy?
Not satisfied.
No. Okay, so that's a tie, so therefore, I would, I would have to say that, you know, if it's a tie, it's not satisfied. The variance shall be the minimum necessary to grant relief created by the practical difficulty.
Well, the minimum necessary would be no variance whatsoever, variance whatsoever. They can build a house and a lot that wouldn't require a variance, so this is probably not satisfied, as far as I'm concerned. satisfied, as far as I'm concerned.
Mm-hmm.
Rod?
I agree, it's not satisfied. I hate the word, or the sentence in the satisfied, that this variance allows for a reasonable-sized home. I don't think the home was out of reason, but it is bigger.
Tracy?
Yeah, I don't believe it's satisfied.
Okay, that's, and I too, so that one is unanimous.
Just to note that, as you're going through these findings, you know, staff provided options for satisfied and not satisfied, if you want to make any modifications to the rationale behind the satisfied and not satisfied, you're welcome to, but we do need to make sure that each one of them has the rationale. So we'll assume that you're adopting the rationale as provided by staff unless you make any changes.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay, IMF, the conditions and situations which necessitate the requested variance is not so general or of such recurrent nature as to make the formulation of a general regulation for such conditions reasonably practical.
If I'm reading it correctly, I think that this probably is one of those things where we're going to have to look, or the planning commission is going to have to look at doing something to maybe, I don't know, address this type of a small lot in the future, we may be having variances all day long on this, and there's something that can be done to look at that, so I'm not too sure. This is a condition which may necessitate more looking into it to create some kind of option in the ordinance, to be able to work with this type of lot size, wherever that may be. You're talking about pavers and things like that, that might be a, so I don't know, is that what this is saying, or am I reading it wrong?
Yeah, I think, I think that this is saying, you know, you don't want to be approving variances that would, in theory, need to apply to all of the parcels in the vicinity. So if, you know, if, this is an extreme example, but if this parcel was not buildable, you couldn't build a home, and you granted a variance, so that you changed the setback, so they could fit a home, but then the assumption is also that every single one of those home, those parcels would also need the same variance, then you would need to change the zoning as opposed, yeah.
I guess I go the other way, how many requests have we had to give a variance on impervious surface? I can think of maybe one, and I've said on this board a lot over the last 20 years, but we do more setbacks, we do, you know, more building envelope, that kind of thing, but not because of impervious surface. That's just my.
I agree, Tracy, but I've only been here a very short time, year and a half, but it, it, most all of the, or all of the ones that we've had recently have been the, you know, setbacks, something of that sort, setback from the water line, setback from whatever.
Right. Which, yeah, I would agree.
And that's why I was asking about the proposal of treating the water, I mean, we just call it impervious, but yet there are maybe ways to treat that, that's not fitting satisfied or not satisfied.
But we don't have those.
I know, we don't, I understand.
Abilities to do that now, so this is what we're dealing with.
So I'm confused, are you saying?
I would say not satisfied.
And John, you said no.
I'm still sticking with satisfied.
Satisfied, okay. Rod?
I think we're satisfied.
I have to say it's not. This is one of the key standards that, under the present ordinance, and I have been on the board where, let's put it this way, I've been on the board but not part of the original decision back when, and somebody comes up and the first thing they point out is that you did this for them, and now you can't do it for me. And it has put, in this case, the planning board in some difficult situations. So because I have to look at where this can go, and supporting what the ordinance says, I have to go with that, I support the ordinance. So in this case, it's not satisfied in my case. Again, we have a tie, so it has to be non-satisfied. There is no reasonable alternative location on the lot for the proposed improvements for which the variance is sought, whereas such alternative location would eliminate the need for the requested variance, or reduce the extent of the conditions of necessitating the variance.
Sorry, I.
Just waiting to hear, but, okay. Rod?
Not satisfied, could be redesigned.
And I agree, so that's unanimous on that one. The requested variance shall relate only to the property that is under the control of the applicant.
Satisfied.
Satisfied. Okay. Under the requirements of the standards, if they all have to pass in order for it to be approved, and based upon the discussion as you hear, that has not made it, so therefore the variance is denied.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
I'm just checking.
Well, I mean, it's clear, but.
Right, I understand, but I think there needs to be a motion.
Please.
So I would make a motion to deny the case 2.25 for 4307 Balsam Circle, based on the fact that it does not meet all the standards.
Second.
Motion by Tracy to deny the motion, deny the variance based upon not meeting the standards, seconded by John, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, motion's passed. Finally, we come to the next public comment, and we'll open that at 7:48.
Judy Nemitz, East Bay Township, I want to thank you all for your due diligence tonight. These are never easy decisions, as we all know. I think there is some background here, that it was a long and arduous, some days, but some days it was fun to work a long time with Planner Carner and Chair Gonzalez on the ordinance, and you have to remember that this passed three boards before this ordinance was approved. The planning commission, the subcommittee, of which members overlapped and had two votes, and the board of trustees. So this ordinance, whether it be on nonconformings in the lakes, A and B, and not in there, this was really thought through with attorneys, and I think, we know, it's a good ordinance. We know that people put a lot of time in it. It wasn't just a fly-by-night thing. These things were discussed at length. Many of the things that Board Member Evan and Kivell did discuss tonight, maybe it'd be a great idea to review some of those things, because a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of due diligence and a lot of looking at ordinances really went into this, and I thank you all for doing that tonight as well. And thank you, and congratulations on the award. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at 7:50. Our next upcoming meeting is May 13th, same time, same place, and therefore we are adjourned.